This is an historic moment. And all kidding aside, it's definitely appreciated that everybody is here this evening for our first ever meeting of the Joint City and Clam Lake Planning Commission. So I really appreciate you all being here. My name, by the way, is Marcus Petcha. I'm the city manager for the City of Cadillac. Mr. Benson, and how do I pronounce your last name?
Stautenberg.
Yeah, Mr. Stautenberg. I did put my business cards in front of you guys so that you have my contact information. And if anybody else needs it and doesn't have it, obviously, let me know and I'd be happy to pass it along. So to my right, and why don't we just do some quick introductions, if you don't mind?
I'm Mike Homier. I'm the city's attorney.
John Wallace, the city's community development director.
And I'm Mike Coy, the city zoning administrator.
So this is more likely than not likely the team of people that you'll see representing city staff at these meetings when you have them. So hopefully, over time, we'll all get to know each other better, which I'm sure we will. Tonight's meeting really is an organizational meeting. We've provided access digitally to all of the various documents surrounding the area that this body has authority over. If you have any questions or issues about accessing the site, that's through Mike Homier's office, let him know and a member of his staff can help facilitate that information. If there's anything that you guys ever need printed out for a meeting, if you could give us a jingle, John, or myself, or Mike, ahead of time, or an email, again, just let us know and we'll be happy to make copies of whatever the documents are for you in advance. Tonight's agenda, which we have, is pretty simple. We're gonna conduct a roll call vote. I thought we would have you guys introduce yourselves as well, maybe just a little bit about your background. We'll have an opportunity for the public to make some comments, if there's any public here to do so. And then, really, what we'd like to get through tonight is an overview of the bylaws that have been presented in a draft form. Certainly, if there are some tweaks that you guys want to make, we can make them. If you feel comfortable in approving them, we can do that. If not, we don't have to. You can do it at another meeting that we can schedule at a point in time yet to be decided. We would also like to appoint, if you're comfortable with that, officers for the board as well. And I'm gonna let Mike kind of walk us through that process when we get there. So without any further ado, we have you sitting simply in alphabetical order, if you haven't figured that out yet. And I'd like to start with Mr. Jerry Adams. If you could tell us who you are and just a quick background.
Sure. My name is Jerry Adams. I'm the former community development director. John took my place about four years ago now, I think. I'm retired, but still have a vital interest in what's happening with respect to the city and township, and do a lot of volunteering, and that's all I'll say.
Wonderful. I'm Joe Baumann. I'm on the planning commission here in the city. And also, my day job is general counsel and vice president at Wolverine on 55.
I'm Bill Benson, and I'm on the Clam Lake Township Board. I'm a dairy farmer in Clam Lake Township, a lifelong resident of Clam Lake Township, and I'm turning the farm over to my son, so I'm slowing down a little bit, but other than that, I stay pretty busy yet.
Dave Bunce, lived in Cadillac since '86, moved here from Chicago. My wife's on the city council here, and I'm on the planning commission with Joe. And interested in what happens down the line as far as what kind of development that we can do that's advantageous to everybody involved. Like to hear all the ideas and see what we come up with.
Steve Gregory. Moved Cadillac about 20 years ago from the Detroit area, and I'm now retired. My wife sews and does all sorts of things. I was looking for something to do, and I thought this would be interesting, so I signed up, and here I am.
Here you are.
Ryan Schultz. I've been living here in Cadillac for 15-plus years now. Day job is chief operating officer for MR Products up in Cohtnish, proprietary manufacturer up there. And when I'm in Cadillac, you'll find me at the Wexford County Civic Center. I'm on the board there for the volunteer board, hockey coach, and treasurer for the Hockey Association.
Okay.
Dave Stautenberg, property owner for about 20 years, 15 years resident up here. I moved up here, Chicago, Detroit, then up here. I've served on the Wexford County zoning board for a number of years, and then made the transition over to Clam Lake Township Board where I chair right now. My day job, I'm a vice president at Fifth Third Bank Portfolio Manager reporting Cincinnati. And looking forward to working with you guys.
Great. John, you wanna give it a whirl?
We're gonna do a roll call now, just to document who's here today.
Here.
Baumann.
Here.
Benson.
Here.
Bunce.
Here.
Gregory.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Stautenberg.
Here.
Very good. Let's hope it always stays this way.
Now, next, we're gonna have the approval of the agenda.
So if you're content with that, I'll do a roll call on the agenda that we're gonna be following this evening.
Motion.
A motion to approve the agenda.
So moved to board.
Adams.
Yes.
Baumann.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Stautenberg.
Yes.
Since we don't have a chairman yet, the next on the agenda is public comments. If there's anybody from the public that would like to make any statement, you would just write your name and address on the sheet, and you'd have three minutes to speak. And if not, then we'll close the public comment.
Oh, no. The press doesn't care.
Okay, we'll close the public comments. Next will be the organization discussion, including but not limited to discussion and adoption of the bylaws. I think at this point in time, I'll turn it over to Mike Homier, who has prepared a draft set of bylaws, and I believe that's on the table in front of you, and I think you probably sent that as well. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
So like Marcus said, congratulations. This feels like an Apollo group of astronauts, you know? It's sort of the first meeting of uncharted territory. I don't have any clients with a joint planning commission. I haven't done a survey around the state, but they're very rare. So it's a good collaborative effort, and one that was brought about by, as you probably are all well aware of, settlement of the protracted litigation involving these properties. And so I think it's a good settlement. I don't know if any of you or all of you have accessed the documents that we uploaded, but it sort of tells a story of how we ended up, where we ended up in terms of the Act 425, the transferred area over which this body will have jurisdiction under or pursuant to the city zoning ordinance, which means a lot of sort of the pre-application review process before you make a recommendation then ultimately to the city council. And both John, and Mike, and Marcus, and myself are here to help the joint planning commission fulfill that duty. And it's an important duty, and I don't want you to think that it's just a rubber stamp of any kind. There are important issues, I think, that this body will eventually address when it comes to individual site preparation. So one of the things that we have to sort of do is get organized, and I think that we'll get to the bylaws in a second. But I think it's important, if the joint planning commission wants to have a discussion over the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary position, or a discussion about those positions, we could do that tonight. I did not intend that the joint planning commission would approve bylaws tonight. You're certainly welcome to if you're comfortable with them. But I think there are certain components of that that we took some liberty with in just trying to fill those out for a draft that we can discuss. There may be nuances when it comes to a joint planning commission that we need to talk about, and the applicability of those bylaws to the joint planning commission. These were formed from bylaws that are required of a regular planning commission under the Planning Enabling Act versus joint planning commission under the Joint Planning Commission Act. So they're very similar in that respect, but there will be some tweaks to them here and there, I suppose, as we might go through them. So, you know, if you want to, and I don't know whether you're ready to have a discussion about the chair and the vice chair and the secretary position, they're important positions because, obviously, the chair serves as a moderator to sort of conduct the meetings and guide those discussions. Vice chair then acts when the chair's not available, and the secretary then is responsible through probably the staff of the city in making sure that all of the notes and the minutes are prepared and kept in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. So most of you have prior experience, but for those that you don't, this body is governed by the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act, meaning that public records are publicly available through FOIA requests. And then you have this obligation under the Open Meetings Act to only discuss or deliberate towards decision-making under the Open Meetings Act. That means you should avoid having a quorum present when you are outside of a properly noticed meeting and having discussions on what issues you may or may not be dealing with, okay? And that includes correspondence by email. So if you're corresponding by email and you have a quorum present on that email string, it could constitute a meeting in violation of the Open Meetings Act. And so we want to be very careful about those types of correspondence and those types of issues, because all of the public body, which is what you are, deliberations and discussions have to take place in an open meeting pursuant to notice, okay? We don't currently have any regular meeting schedule. We can talk about that. The Planning Enabling Act requires at least four regular meetings of a planning commission. We've adopted the same sort of schedule with this public body, that you will have at least four meetings annually, but we haven't set those meetings on a regular meeting schedule so that all of your meetings right now would be by special meeting unless you want to adopt a regular meeting. I always suggest that you adopt at least a four regular meeting schedule. You can have additional meetings, but that ensures that on an annual basis, you meet that four regular meetings. Because what typically happens is, if you don't have much to do during the whole year, you get to the end of the year and go, oh, shoot, we haven't had any meetings this year. Now we're gonna have four meetings in a year, or in a one-month period, right? Which doesn't do anybody any good. So if you set, like, regular meetings quarterly, annually, then you've met that requirement. If you need to have more meetings, you can just set those by regular meeting, or special meeting, which only requires then 18 hours' notice.
And this meeting does constitute meeting that four?
Yes. I mean, in terms of the...
So this is one of the four.
Yeah. The number of meetings is just a requirement under the Planning Enabling Act. It says you have to have four meetings. It doesn't differentiate between regular or special, okay? So this meeting is a special meeting, but it qualifies as one of the four that you would have to have during a year, okay? And because we are kicking off now the first meeting in 2020, I suspect you're going to at least get in four meetings this year, probably more, so. But I'll leave it up to you whether you want to set defined dates for regular meetings or not, and we can get to that. But I think the first thing that, if you want to have that discussion, nominations, motions to elect a chair, vice chair, and secretary, now might be a good time to have that discussion.
Yeah. If I may just jump in. We do record the meetings, and staff will certainly be providing, to whomever the secretary may be, a draft of the minutes, based upon, you know, our input that we receive during the meetings. So I don't want anyone to be concerned that they're perhaps taking on unduly responsibility in terms of having to keep those notes. You know, you'll have all the help you need from us. Hi, Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we probably ought to establish our, you know, officials, like we, you know, so.
So if there's folks on the board that are interested in throwing their name out there for chair, I would say please make that known, try to get support, and let's move forward, and we'll just go one by one.
I'll nominate Joe Baumann for chairman.
I'll nominate Jerry.
I prefer not to.
Okay, well, that's plenty.
Thank you.
That tells me something. Thank you.
So then, do we have a second for...
I'd support Joe.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right. John, why don't you call?
Who supported that?
Jerry supported.
Nomination.
Nomination.
For chair.
For chair.
For Joe.
Yeah, for chair. Sure.
Adams.
Aye.
Baumann.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Bunce.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Stautenberg.
Yes.
Congratulations. The rest of the meeting's yours.
You get to sit in the center now.
As long as it's permissible, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Bill Benson as vice chair.
I support.
Who would support?
I'd support him.
Bunce. Adams.
Yes.
Baumann.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Stautenberg.
Yes.
I'm not certain if there were any particular interest in secretary.
I contact.
Is everybody looks away? I'm just glad I already have a job.
It's not as involved as you might...
There are significant staff at your disposal to ensure that all of the requirements are met, and the notices are sent, and the minutes are done.
That's what we do.
Yes.
I wouldn't mind serving as secretary.
Wonderful.
Who will?
I would nominate Mr. Adams as secretary.
I would support that.
They haven't seen my minutes for the planning.
Is that why it is?
I was close. I was just about ready to say something, and then...
He took over.
Took over. He beat me to it, so.
Excuse me.
You have two nominations.
Support from Benson.
Adams.
Yes.
Baumann.
Yes.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Stautenberg.
Yes.
Condolences to all of us. I think the next piece from Mr. Homier was whether we should discuss the bylaws this evening, or perhaps the will of the body. I had an opportunity to review them personally. I'm not sure if everyone else did, and what the will of the group is. So I guess maybe I'll leave it up to...
I review them also. I have a few comments, but questions, really.
So actually, if you guys are open to discussing them tonight...
I am.
I just have a... May I start?
Please.
I just have a few questions, Mike. Page three, and this deals with the secretary. My question is, I think I know the answer, but it's Section 2.3. It says, "All communications, petitions, and reports," this is the last sentence, "addressed to the joint planning commission must be delivered or mailed to the secretary or the secretary's authorized designate." They would come here, if I'm the secretary, they would come to the city hall, is that correct? Not to my house?
That's, I believe, that's right. I mean, even the way everything is set up, and the reason why we're having meetings here is we intend to utilize the city facilities for that, including the staff.
Just so it's clear, because somebody reading this might assume that I'll mail them to Jerry's house or something.
Would it be appropriate for this body to actually authorize the designate, in this case, Mr. Coy or somebody else here at City Hall? Mr. Wallace?
We could do that by title. Like, so, for example, that Section 2.3 could do two things. One is, it could say, "All communications, petitions, and report addressed to the joint planning commission must be delivered or mailed to the secretary or the secretary's
They would come here, if I'm the secretary, they would come to the city hall, is that correct? Not to my house?
That's, I believe, that's right. I mean, even the way everything is set up, and the reason why we're having meetings here is we intend to utilize the city facilities for that, including the staff.
Just so it's clear, because somebody reading this might assume that I'll mail them to Jerry's house or something.
Would it be appropriate for this body to actually authorize the designate, in this case, Mr. Coy or somebody else here at City Hall? Mr. Wallace?
We could do that by title. Like, so, for example, that Section 2.3 could do two things. One is, it could say, "All communications, petitions, and report addressed to the joint planning commission must be delivered or mailed to the secretary's designate," then have a title in there, "at City Hall 200 North Lake Street."
That works.
Right? Okay. The only question is, then, who is going to be...
Probably Community Development.
Okay. Community Development Director?
Yeah. Because they don't go to that office, it'll process it.
All right. Again, I really don't have any... This is on the top of page four. It just talks about the terms, and the one-year, two-year, three-year, and so forth. The question I have is, on the officers, and maybe it's a little later, but it says that the officers serve for a one-year term. Can they be reappointed? May they be? Should it say that?
I think it does.
Does it somewhere?
Yeah, with eligibility for reelection.
Okay.
In 2.3.
Okay, okay. I missed it. Thank you. All right. Again, almost...
Not to answer your question for you, Mr. Homier, if I'm...
Don't have that minute.
...pointing to me correctly.
Yeah, 2.3, that's correct.
Okay.
The term of each office is one year with eligibility for reelection.
Page nine. Do we have to indicate a time for the meetings? It's Rule 5, meetings. It says, "shall determine the time." Is it necessary for the rules to have the time in it, or not?
No. And I suspect it depends on what you do with meetings. So, for example, if the planning, if the joint planning commission were to set a regular meeting schedule, let's suppose you pick four days of the year where you're going to have a regular meeting, that becomes your regular meeting schedule. Those will be published times for those meetings. All the other meetings are gonna be special meetings and could be set at various different times. Particularly if you have, let's suppose, somebody comes in with an application, wants some site plan review of a particular site in the development, and your next regular meeting schedule is two months away, right? You're going to likely set a special meeting, call a special meeting for that purpose, and depending on availability and time, then you'll get to decide when that timing will be. But it may not be during a regular time. Now, I would encourage you to keep it as close to the regular time as possible. So if you're, like, tonight, we're meeting at 6:00 PM, that's just a matter of calling the organizational meeting. If you decide you want to meet at 5:30, as long as the facilities are available, then you could do that as well. So I will leave that up to the joint planning commission to try and coordinate that with staff on the availability of those. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the bylaws.
Page 10. And I know the answer to this, I believe, but just, Section 5.5, public participation. Basically, I know what we're getting at here, is if there are members of the public, as tonight, there's an opportunity for them to speak. This in no way implies that the applicant is limited to three minutes, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I think we may have a change of our own under subsection B of that same section, where we're just gonna cut that down to provide the person's name and address.
Okay.
Yes.
And I think, page 11, let's see, 7.2. It talks about minutes of closed sessions. Do you envision we'll have closed sessions?
You could.
Good, okay.
Yeah, so, for example, if, let's suppose you get an application for some use that we need to determine whether or not it is appropriate use, either under the zoning ordinance, under the 425, you know, we may have occasion to draft a legal opinion on those issues and discuss that with the planning commission before it renders a decision. So I don't want to forego it.
Then, my question, I guess, then, is, does the, do the bylaws need to address how we handle closed sessions?
We can. I mean, those are addressed by the Open Meetings Act, right? Where the minutes of a closed session are kept for one year and one day, and could be destroyed after that. They cannot be released to anybody absent a court order. So, but we would have that discussion, too, once we had a closed session about the legal parameters of what should and should not be disclosed.
That's fine. And then my last, page 13, just curious. Are decisions subject to consideration by the zoning board of appeals?
I don't know. In some cases, yes, but in other cases, probably not. So, for example, the zoning enabling act says that a zoning board of appeals would not have jurisdiction over a special land use permit unless the ordinance specifically says that they have jurisdiction. I don't believe that the city's ordinance says that specifically, but I did not go back and take a look at it.
It may be an item we, you, and John, want to explore, possibly?
Yeah, I mean, I suppose at the end of the day, the ZBA either does or does not, depending on how the ordinance is written right now.
Okay.
It'll also depend on how we zone the balance of the property in the transfer area. If it's all by the PUD, I would think that the decisions probably wouldn't be appealable to the ZBA. However, if we decide to zone some of that property under standard zoning district rules, then perhaps it would be.
There are some decisions, though, like, for instance, I'll give you an example. Let's suppose somebody submits an application to the city, and John takes a look at the application and determines that it's incomplete, and he's not going to send it to the joint planning commission for review and decision. That would be a decision that could be reviewable by the ZBA.
We're getting into the weeds a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, look, these are sort of, yeah, these are sort of issues, but certainly in terms of the bylaws, I mean, the bylaws aren't gonna determine whether or not a decision is or is not appealable.
Yeah, I was just, was curious.
Other questions?
Yes. On the bottom of page five, number four. Until February 19, 2021, it references marijuana. I was under the understanding it was a two-year. Bill, were you under that impression?
I was also that it was a two-year.
So what this means is, there's absolutely no discussion about any marijuana facilities until after February 19, 2021?
Yeah, and that's why... Yeah, and that's why I.
Was it a two and a half years?
Something like that, yeah.
It was supposed to be two or two and a half.
Two and a half.
Yeah, so, but, you know, according to this, it was only one and a half.
Next month is February 2021.
Two and a half, but the question would be, what was the, what was the effective date of that?
Right.
From when's do we count?
It's been a while since that came to.
Well, I think it was in August.
Yeah, July or August.
I think it was August when it was, you know, finalized.
Well, let me find it real quick and we can go over that. Maybe. I doubt it. I suspect that date came directly from the 425, but I'll check.
Looks like the settlement agreement was filed in June of 19.
It was finalized in June.
Yeah, it looks like it was filed at least.
Right, June 28th, so that would have been probably the effective.
Going by the filing date, not?
It'll probably depend upon how the settlement, and you gentlemen would know it better than I do, but probably depending upon how the settlement was written.
Okay.
Still.
Yeah. So the, that's covered under 9.4A of the Act 425 agreement. It refers to two and a half years following the effective date of the agreement. The effective date of the agreement is. You'd think the effective date would be easier to find.
Usually us lawyers capitalize those things just for.
Well, and usually it's at the beginning, but I'm not certain that it is in this case. So the agreement itself was the 19th day of August. The effective date is. The date and time that when it was filed with the Secretary of State's office, which I believe was August 20th of 19. So we'll have to.
Well, so then that would probably should have been February 2022.
Twenty-two.
Is probably what the date should have been in there.
Ah.
I'll check on that date.
You know, that, that would make sense then with the two and a half years.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Depending upon how you count months, it might be February 21 of 22.
Right. But.
Do we have a leap month in there?
We do in fact.
Yeah, right, coming up.
Anyway, then, I, I've got a question on page one and five. And I believe six. It refers to Exhibits A and B on page one, B, C, and D on page five, and six on exhibit C and D. Now, then, are referring to maps, I take it. So therefore, should there be maps attached with this bylaws?
Yeah, and I did not attach the exhibits, but those are exhibits that are also referenced under the 425.
Right.
Right. Yes.
Okay, so they should be included with our bylaws?
Yes.
The mapping or whatever.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, as well as Exhibit B, which is the, I think there are.
It has to do with.
First amended development agreement.
Right, right.
Which is really going to be an important document for you folks.
Right. So.
Yeah, and those will, like I said, I did not intend for the, because I knew there would be some revisions likely to these. So, you know, when, I suppose you could do one of two things, and that is conditionally approve them if you think you're ready to do it tonight, or approve them at a later meeting with all the exhibits, all the revisions. Okay, all right, fair enough.
Other questions for Mr. Homier?
On.
Go ahead, Ray.
The, where was it? I just lost it. Where it states where we can hold the meetings? Is it possible to hold the meetings at the actual Terry G., Terry D. Junction at a certain point, Cadillac Junction? To be put in there if we wanted to have a field trip at some point, if something was going on? Or the plans, if you have a conference center there and wanted to have something, mostly looking down the line, of course.
Yes.
Okay.
So change of venue, you're speaking of?
Yeah, it's, we're, it was on one of the pages I was reading. Page nine, 5.1.
Did it, did it say you couldn't?
It says, "Meetings of the Joint Planning Commission shall be held at the Cadillac City Hall."
We should, well, I think we should add some.
Well, I guess, or we could have something in there that says, or a special session could be held at another.
Such other places.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll revise that.
Place to be determined or whatever. Okay?
Other questions? There seem to be a few substantive fixes that I think, at least it sounds to me, Mr. Staunberg and Mr. Benson in particular would like to see in print before we conditionally approved them, if that's, if I'm hearing that correctly. So I might prefer, if it's the will of the body, to wait until our next meeting to approve the bylaws as altered and as appended with the exhibits. Is there any disagreement on that regarding?
I, I think that's fair.
Is that acceptable to the city staff?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
I did notice, just if it helps for the purposes of the minutes, it looks like a change to 2.0, section 2.3, edits as appropriate to the, I'll call them the marijuana sections, you'll excuse me, but the sections involving marijuana and consideration of marijuana businesses related to the date. Third piece would be changes to 5.5 sub B, then attaching the exhibits, and then the change to 5.1 permitting, as our attorney suggests, other places as properly noticed and approved by the, by the Joint Planning Commission. Did I miss anything?
The meeting section?
Yes, that 5.1.
Well, let me go through the ones that I have, just to make sure.
Okay.
I've got, the first change is section 2.3 regarding the Development Director and the address.
Yes.
For Communications.
Correct.
And I've got 4.1A4, changing the date on the marijuana facilities.
Yes.
As well as in paragraph five.
A5, correct.
And then I've got 5.1 on the location of the meetings, and 5.5B, deleting the topic to be addressed and position on the matter.
Yes.
And I believe that's it.
Did you get the public participation?
Yes, yeah, that was that last one.
Then you, you got the exhibits in there, right?
Yeah, and the exhibits.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Perhaps the board wants to discuss meeting dates. We could also put those in the bylaws as well, unless you're not prepared to do that, or how would you suggest?
Well, I'm sort of reluctant to put meeting dates in there because it means you'd have to go back and amend them if you change. So what's required under the Open Meetings Act is if you set a regular meeting schedule, then you publish that regular meeting schedule. But it does not, it's not required to be in your bylaws.
Oh, okay.
And so, for instance, next year, when you set them, they might be different than what they are today. You'd have to amend the bylaws, and I don't want you to have to do that.
And we don't want to do that.
But you can, you can discuss meeting dates.
Right. Well, we have to be aware, you and I, Bill, have to be aware of our, our dates. We're going to be meeting on Thursdays.
Right, and our town board meets on the second Monday. And, but other Mondays, I'm free.
Same here.
Mondays are actually really bad for the city.
Okay.
Other than this Monday, where we did not have a regularly scheduled council meeting set. The, this room is used in the evening, if that's when we plan on meeting. Basically, every Monday of the month, there's something scheduled.
Tuesdays are good for me, or Thursday, probably.
Tuesdays or Thursdays are good for me too. I mean, we're not having that many roughly meetings right now. We don't have anything on the agenda.
Mr. Coy?
Thursdays, fine. The Zoning Board of Appeals, though, typically meets the third Thursday of every month. That's.
Might it be most efficient to have city staff try to coordinate days from individuals that might work as opposed to doing it here in the room with, like Ms. Cornell, I'm not sure if she could coordinate that for us? Looking at Marcus and.
Sure.
Because everybody have to look at conflicts anyways, and the proposed bylaws want us all here as often as we can, so.
And this would just be for those four, right, three remaining for the.
Yes.
And then, and then, as needed, the chair or two members could call a special meeting.
Okay.
And perhaps I'm beating a dead horse here a little bit, but I, I think what is more likely to happen than not is we'll end up having special meetings called because we'll be ready to go with, you know, a project or a development concept that's been brought forward and is ready for this board's consideration and review. So we're going to need to call a meeting, as the city attorney said, it's going to be before one of the regular meetings. So we might exceed the, you know.
Well, the other thing, the other thing too is also true, that let's suppose you have a bunch of special meetings, you review an application for site plan review, you make your recommendation to, say, the city council, and now your work, your immediate work is done, right?
Right.
Just because you have another regular meeting scheduled in the next week, or two weeks or three, doesn't mean you can't cancel that.
Right, well, that's, I was going to ask that, you know, but, you know, if you still have four scheduled meetings, but if you're having special meetings and it's near one of the meetings, you just cancel your regular meeting.
Yeah. And I could have decided that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Wonderful. Sir, I'm sorry.
Do we need a contact list prepared for our information?
They probably already.
I think that'd be really helpful if, is it possible for the city to send that around as well? Obviously not joining together in a quorum, as we were appropriately suggested by council.
And here, here's part of the problem too, and I want you to make aware, be aware of this. So what happens, the reply all button is a dangerous thing. And so if you send out an email, let's suppose one of you has a question for the other, and you say, "What do you think about this application?" Or you direct that to the group, right? And you say, you send out just information, here's the site plan we got, right? And now somebody hits reply all and says, "Well, I don't really like this." Then somebody else hits reply all, "Yeah, I don't think I like this either." Suddenly, you got a quorum, and you're discussing matters that should be discussed in a public meeting. So what I will do typically for our municipal clients is I will send out an email addressed to one person and say, "Here, I'm giving you this information." And I note in that email that it's to the other members by blind copy. The reason why I do that is so that if somebody hits reply all, it's coming back to me and not anybody else, right? And that way, we, we avoid having a quorum then for those discussions. So just be aware of that.
And the city's usually particularly good with that as well.
We did send out the reminder to everybody openly, so you could all see, but future correspondence from us, regardless of subject matter, will likely all come out through blind copy, so. So it's not going to have anyone in there.
All right.
But we can still certainly share your contact information.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, I think so.
Is there other business for the joint commission?
I just wanted to take a few minutes to present where we've been with the Terry D. project in terms of what has been approved, and then also a little bit about the land use allocation that was part of the court settlement. And the reason those are important is obviously, and you have the MPUD ordinance in front of you, any future plans that come before you for Terry D. need to have a final site plan approval, so it'll have to comply with the MPUD ordinance and so forth. And with respect to the remaining property of Cadillac Investments, that property will need to be addressing the proper zoning of that property. And we probably want to address it sooner as opposed to later, depending on what the, you know, rate of development may be out in that area. But it would be nice to have some of those things settled before we actually get a development application in front of us. Are we going to do it by MPUD like we're doing with Terry D.? Are we going to set up special districts or use some of the existing districts? Those kind of decisions will have to be made. But with that, I, I can just walk through some of the basics.
That'd be great.
Prior to talking about the specific uses, I wanted to just show you some of the slick graphics that were originally prepared for the, these are the landscape standards. A berm was designed for the frontage of the project. And the berm was, I think, a foot and a half, two feet high, figuring that the vegetation may be two or three feet high as well. And then there were also some key areas where some height was introduced. These are the concept drawings. The actual site plan largely resembles this, but there's a few, a few more trees been added to the final site, site plan that was approved. Say, for instance, by the truck fueling station, we added three or four trees in that area that help camouflage, you know, the, the truck fueling that may be going on. Just another view of the berm from a different level. This is basically the build-out of the entire PUD as proposed in the. This is basically the build-out of the entire PUD as proposed in the sketch plan. The real nice thing about this PUD is that it, it took the traffic in at what would be a controlled intersection eventually. It's envisioned that there will be signals at the, at the intersection where the Terry D. Boulevard goes into the development. And rather than have the commercial driveway strung out along the state highway. You essentially have just the one busy intersection that would be signalized. And then the internal driveways where all the turning movements would happen actually happen on an internal street. Which then reduces the, it causes the main function of the state highway not to be reduced in terms of its efficiency of handling traffic on the state highway. So that, that was a nice concept. The other thing you'll, you'll kind of get a sense from this, this particular view is that they tried to maintain as much of the wooded areas of the site as they could, particularly in the residential areas. And I'll, I'll go over the land use plan in a little bit more detail in a minute. Same type of, just a different view for the same overall development. And you can also notice too in this one that the, the development, for better or for worse, is also screened from the freeway. So people that, driving by the city, it won't look particularly urban with MDOT owning a lot of the property that buffers the development from the freeway. Just more views of, of how the frontage would look and the scale of that with some of the immediate buildings that would be built immediately inside the development. And the one principal sign, I think Mike was also determined what the size of that sign could be. But I think it's largely in keeping with what you see in the concept of this particular view.
I believe the current sign is 28-foot.
What, oh, wait.
The J&amp;H Oil.
Oh, we're talking about the sign.
Talking about the entrance, the new.
Okay.
Which I think, if I recall, is 36-feet tall. I'd have to check, but. And that's set forth in the first development, First Amendment Development Agreement.
This is, I've kind of color-coded the land uses. You see on the main entry drive, that's Terry D. Boulevard. All the red boxes are the commercial portion of the PUD. At the entrance, you have the convenience store. You have a restaurant planned immediately to the west of that. You have other retail, including, oh, there's a spec retail building that's out there right now that's also been built. There's also a bank, a restaurant, and other retail near the front. Then you see in that light green retention area. And directly behind the retention area, you have a hotel and conference center. And then beyond that, it's envisioned a relatively large, large box retail. As well as on the south side, more large box retail. On the eastern portion of the site, which is at the bottom portion of the development. You see again, three different retention ponds in the lighter green. You can see that generally between 40 and 50 feet of buffer space along the state highway. And then I think it's at least 50 feet along the adjoining residential property. You see the yellow line kind of weaving through there. That's a, a walking trail that's planned for that area, given the wooded nature there. And then you'll also see kind of a, a purple line coming up from the apartments that are at the front and they're in kind of the gold color. And that, that's a sidewalk that connects up to the restaurant areas. Then you also have the middle use on the bottom portion of the drawing. You have a senior living facility. And then immediately south of that, at the very south end of the project, you have senior independent living units. So in the front, it's more luxury general apartment buildings than the senior living and then the senior independent living. So that's kind of the essence of where we've been in terms of what's been targeted. That was all submitted as part of the sketch plan. Any one of these lots that come in would come before this group and then would have to be, they would have to be considered for a final site plan approval. And because we had this site plan here, doesn't mean we have to approve it just as the sketch plan has it here. As long as we honor the general direction that they established, we can still tweak those plans to improve them in, in the final approval process. Then moving south of the Terry D. project. And you can see the Cadillac Junction or Terry D., it's kind of in the white. You can see the red boxes in there. That's the area that you were just looking at. You can actually see that the Cadillac Investments property is substantially larger in area than actually the Terry D. PUD. And there were some general parameters set up for land use. Single family, multiple family, mixed use. It would include commercial office, research and development, and residential if over retail space. And then, of course, you have the various marijuana restrictions on different areas of that property that are, have to be dealt with as well. So in the not-too-distant future, we'll, we'll probably want to be thinking about how do we actually zone this area to be consistent with the legal agreement? And then carry it forward into a functional zoning strategy for that area. So I just sort of wanted to introduce some of these planning concepts to just, you know, get your minds thinking about where, where we're going with some of these things. And some of the things that we'll be addressing at some of the upcoming meetings.
And the Board has access to all of these documents through the LinkedIn portal that you were emailed last week. So it takes a minute if you haven't yet just to create your, your profile and your login. And then you can download and print and see all the information.
You know, if. Be careful about printing though. There's one document's 300 and some pages long, so.
I will say too that, you know, if you look at a lot of the notes on this plan, and you'll be able to, to check that out on, on the website. We did go with more of a modern parking standard. We believe the city's parking standard right now is a little dated in terms of requiring too much parking. And so you'll see that the parking requirements were set more, I think, to what communities are establishing today for their big box retail. I think we can all look for examples where there's oceans of parking well beyond what is used for some big box stores. And we wanted to make sure that we didn't have excessive runoff and things that we didn't really need for the retail areas. So that's something to give some thought to as we, we look at the Cadillac Investments property as well.
No, do you have any questions about? And I'm not sure how thoroughly you looked at the 425, the First Amendment Development Agreement. The First Amendment Development Agreement's going to be very important for the ongoing site plan review and approval process for Cadillac Junction as we know it. And then the Act 425 is going to kick in on some of the land use issues on the Cadillac Investment property that was, that is south of the current Cadillac Junction property. So we, when, when Cadillac Junction, when the first, when the First Amendment Development Agreement was originally drafted, there, there are provisions in there which were meant to facilitate the development of the Cadillac Investment property to the south. Including the extension of infrastructure, water and sewer, as well as the extension of roadways. So there is that ability. We still have some work on those issues to do, like the extension of the easement in order to get the roadway there and then extension of the roadway. That will happen, I suspect, as development occurs. But right now, those elements are there in order to do it. But it's going to have to involve you folks in terms of reviewing how this is going to work out.
Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, since we see roundabouts kind of happening all over northern Michigan, is that a spot where to facilitate traffic? They might put one in there to, is that a possibility or?
Yeah, and I think in large part that depends on you folks, right? Because you're going to be presented with a plan eventually. The, the sketch plan with the roads that are currently there, that's been approved, right? So when we talk about site plan review and approval, that's not likely going to affect the road layout in Cadillac Junction. It could. For instance, if somebody came in with a completely different sort of plan where they were combining properties and doing something different with the roadways, that would involve you. If they intend solely to extend those existing roadways to serve those sites that have been delineated on the sketch plan, I suspect we're not going to tinker too much with the roads. But when you get to that current cul-de-sac on the sketch plan and development then into the southern portion, I suppose somebody might propose something like that. I don't know.
I also think, Mike, it's fair to say, given that M-55 there is all under MDOT approval or MDOT authority. MDOT in the past has been vocal that pending what development happens and when and the density that they may require, if you recall, signalization or other, yeah, a traffic study.
Sure.
They've even gone so far as to say that the whole, you know, layout of the on and off-ramp system might need to be modified depending upon what happens out there. So I would say that anything is, is certainly possible. I could also say that there is a plan that MDOT has currently in play for putting a roundabout just to the west of there. So I want to say it's the Crosby Road and M-55 intersection. I want, it could even be coming this, this upcoming construction season, so. Don't know what they'll do. I think it, like, a little bit of what this Board's doing, sort of a hurry up and wait, you know, to see, okay, you know, we're getting organized. Let's wait and see what happens and, and work on it at that point. Is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, you've probably been out there. I've been out there quite a bit and, you know, sometimes making that turn, say, out of the gas station back on, yeah, onto 55 heading west. Can, you can wait there a little while.
Yeah, you can.
You're getting off the freeway there.
Yeah, getting off there.
Just, just because of how that works and they're trying to get on the freeway.
Yeah, I mean, when, when, when MDOT originally reviewed it, they made no bones about it that there's going to require some modification to M-55, whether it's a traffic signal or something else, so.
One final comment that didn't show up on the graphic. When we approved the sketch plan, we provided a five-year timeframe for a bicycle path along M-55. We may want to revisit whether we want to extend that a couple of years, given the litigation period where the developers weren't able to, you know, be doing anything with the property. So maybe that gets kicked out another year or two. But the thought was that we did want to have a capacity for walking and biking at the front of this project.
Any other questions?
The only other thing, the only other thing that I would encourage you to do at this meeting is try and select a date for your next meeting. Now, we could, we could do that by email later because it's just process. It's not deliberation or anything else. So if you want to wait, we could do that. But I would encourage you to get back together, get the bylaws finalized. So whether that's week, two weeks, three weeks, doesn't matter. But that's one thing I think we would like to get done, is the bylaws done. And the other thing, and I don't, I don't know, I was going to mention this, and John, you may have mentioned it. But, you know, one of the things that the city has to deal with too, you folks as well, is what, what are we going to do with this property? Particularly the Cadillac Investment property to the south in the interim, right? We've got to take some action on the zoning side of this and come up with a zoning designation that tries to most closely resemble what the, the, the property was zoned before. And now bringing it under the city zoning ordinance. And while you might think that that would be the MPUD just because we expect that that's how it will be developed, it doesn't really fit right now because there's no particular plan, other than the land use plan that's attached to the Act 425 agreement, to determine what that use is going to be. And while there may be interest in some of that property, we don't yet know how that's going to lay out. In the interim, we have to zone it something. And so I suspect that's going to be the first task that you might end up dealing with.
And that's that property you're talking about, that's not that one, but that goes beyond.
South of there.
Yeah.
Goes all the way over to Sealy.
Back up there.
Talking about the zoning? No, I don't necessarily, but, you know, we, we're going to have to hold a public hearing, right? Make a recommendation, do all of those steps that.
Can we do the pre, can staff and the Commission do some pre-work before we propose it and then do a public hearing?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and so maybe, you know, maybe what we'll do is do some of that pre-work, then get that next meeting scheduled where you can adopt the bylaws, have discussion about those zoning. And then if you're inclined, set the public hearing at that point for a future date.
That makes a great deal of sense to me.
Yeah, I agree.
Have some other work to do as well if we're getting back together.
And I think the city's Planning Commission has some additional work to do as well. Because of the way the, the land use issues worked out for the Cadillac Investment property. There's a, there's a land use designation on that map that says research and development. But research and development right now is not its own zoning classification and may be limited right now to industrial. So we may need to amend that to include that as a designation in some of the other zoning classifications, including the MPUD, as a research and development characteristic, so.
Do you want to look at the last week of the month?
Marcus, I, I, at least to me, it might help if, are you guys sure you'll have that pre-work done? I mean, I think the Joint Planning Commission would prefer, at least what I'm feeling is to have some work to do when we do the bylaw piece.
Oh, yeah, right.
So that, so that we'll just wait and call that meeting whenever that.
Yes.
Yes, whenever that pre-work is.
That's acceptable to all of you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
As we, as we anticipate dates, I know it was mentioned one of the township meetings was on a Thursday. What, what Thursday of the month was that?
We're, we moved to the last Thursday.
Last Thursday or third, last?
Third would be the third.
Third, third.
We have a meeting coming up.
Okay.
And our regular township meeting is the second Monday, so.
Yeah, I heard Tuesdays might be good days.
Yeah, I, I think Tuesdays are fine with me.
Thursdays work good in my schedule. I'm loaded with a lot of other meetings.
Well, Thursday's okay too.
Yeah, Thursday's fine.
So might, might shoot for a Thursday.
As long as it's six o'clock, I'm good with it.
Six o'clock?
I mean, as long as it's like that time.
Okay, anything further from staff?
No, I think that's it.
Anything further from members of the Commission? If not, motion to. Motion by Mr. Adams? Second by Mr. Benson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Wallace?
Adams?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Stoutenberg?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.